Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and say the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the name of liberty and justice for all. Okay, one second here. All right, I have a roll call. Commissioner Beuhler. She should be on her way. Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Rubes.
Here.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Speaker.
Here.
Commissioner Terry.
Here.
Okay. All right, I am going to open the floor for nominations for chairman. Do I have any nominations?
We nominate our current lay of officers. I nominate Chair Lee and Chair.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead and do that.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And Commissioner Day as vice chair.
Okay. Here.
I'm happy to serve as chair as well. If anyone feels so fit and they want to nominate me, I would be happy to serve them that capacity to help alleviate some of the responsibilities that Kellyanne has.
Okay.
I'll nominate that thing.
So Drew?
Okay, so now we're gonna do... So right now I have a nomination on the table for Kelly... Commissioner Terry as chairman and Commissioner Day as vice chair. Okay, and then I also have a nomination on the table for Commissioner Day as chairman and Commissioner Terry as vice chair, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I have a first on the... I don't know what I need to say. Does it... It's a nomination, so...
Nikki, Ron.
Yes, sorry.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Beuhler for vice chair.
Okay. I'm not there yet. I'm trying to get a chairman first.
Oh, okay, this is a package deal. We're gonna do one.
No, I gotta do... Yeah, I gotta do one and then I'll turn it over to the chair and the chair will do the nominations for vice chair.
I understand, okay.
Because now I've got two nominations on the table. So I have a nomination for Commissioner Terry for chairman and I have a nomination for Commissioner Day for chairman. Are there any more nominations? Any more nominations? I'm gonna close the nominations. All those in favor of Commissioner Terry as chair, please raise your right hand. And those in favor of Commissioner Day, please raise your right hand. Okay, so Commissioner Terry will be the chairman again this year. So I will turn it over to you to do nominations for vice chair, please.
Um, I would like nominations for vice chair.
I'd have my Commissioner Day.
Is there a second on that? Or we don't need seconds?
We don't need seconds.
Are there any other nominations?
How many do we have at this point for the vice? Oh.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Beuhler for vice chairman of the commission.
So there's a nomination for Commissioner Day, there's nomination for Commissioner Beuhler. Is there any other nominations? For vice chair? Okay. What's the nominations? All those in favor of Commissioner Beuhler, please raise your right hand.
You can't.
Are you voting for yourself?
Okay. Did you... What did you vote for?
I voted for...
Okay.
All those in favor of Commissioner Day as vice chair? Thank you. Okay, so we have a chair and a vice chair. Now what?
On business.
Arrival of minutes, December 16th. Everybody have a chance to...
I have received some corrections. Here's just a couple. Thank you.
I move to approve the...
Thank you.
Is there a second on that?
I don't need a second, that's a standing motion.
God, the chair should know that. Every time. Courtesies, proclamations, board and commission reports. You don't do... First do our regular commission reports that we had in... Commissioner Beuhler?
Uh, the library board has not yet met.
They will meet in Thursday. Just gonna double check my days here. I think it's the 23rd of January. Did you have, uh...
Or maybe it's...
The Chili Bowl is coming up?
Yes, the Chili Bowl. That's why I wonder if you change the library board meeting because the Chili Bowl is the 24th and I believe that will be at the Trade Center.
Mr. Speaker?
I do. I'm trying to find the notes here. If you wanna come back to me, I can...
Sure. Commissioner Day.
Park and Marquise with...
This week, this Wednesday. At Seven Pacific Center. Commissioner Rubes?
Not till the last... Or the 4th Monday of January, then we'll pass one.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Airport heats, uh, this coming Wednesday at 3:00 with the terminal.
Nothing.
Here, cut.
Okay.
You've got more... More up here. It seems like you've got more up here and more here.
Well, no, but I will do my best. So we met, um, for like a spontaneous meeting to approve rates for 2025. And we voted to increase them and it was the amount to... Maybe I'll have these notes. To equal the contributions of the average... It's basically the average of like all the other economic development entities in the state that are especially our size. And I'm trying to think what the increase was.
Because it used to be based on like...
It's still that. So it's still on the same basis, but it's a higher rate per... Okay, I know.
You keep looking.
I'll keep looking. We voted to increase it to one level and it kind of equals. I think it doubled it though. I'll tell you. But we voted to increase it a little bit. There's another amount that would really make a difference and that would put us much closer to places like Havre. But we did not do that now. But wanna keep talking about possibly increasing their funding. They've got a lot they want to do and memberships are such a tiny portion of where their funding comes from and they make a very big difference in our area, so... Conversation will continue, but we did vote to increase and every county and state there, or county and city was in favor of it but one very small city, I think. That was basically...
And Snowy Mountain Developments.
Yep, exactly.
Just to throw this out there. That would be a great article for the newspaper to do on what like Snowy Mountain Developments, you know...
Does in their region?
Well, and like, uh... Because I think you guys report all the time on stuff that they're doing. It'd be interesting to know what the, you know, the people... The cities put in as memberships. Because I don't think a lot of people understand that.
Mm-hmm.
And what you pay for your buck, kind of thing.
I went to a meeting last year where they talked about it and I had to play it over.
Well, I'm not saying I'm right out there. You can do it, but... And since I put it on spotlight, um... I'm assuming you sent every commissioner your email?
Yes.
That Will sent out an email to your city email today just asking for comments from commissioners on resolutions that you guys have new year's resolutions for the commission. And did you say Thursday you would like to have comments?
Yeah, Thursday would be great.
I didn't receive one of those.
I sent it to your city email. You only need to send it to your personal.
I'm looking at my city email right now.
Did everyone else receive one?
Right, I don't know.
I looked Friday and I didn't look yesterday.
I think you just sent it to you, didn't you, Will?
This is correct, yeah. Okay.
Did you spell her last name correctly?
Did you spell my last name right? There's a random E in there. It's really fun.
B-U-D-H-L-E-R.
That is mine.
I didn't send it to you.
Yeah, that's funky.
So just so everybody knows, he's working on something. Just to kind of see what people want to be coming up. Well, I'll say our board did... The Central Montana Foundation Board did not meet in December because of everything. And then we meet January 28th at 2:00. There's a lot of things coming up for the Central Montana Foundation, so it's exciting. Well, Katie, if you find it, just...
I can see it on my head. There's a correction?
Yeah, what we know is that you guys met and that that's what it was about. And truly bringing us more...
Do you want me to send it in email?
Okay. City manager report?
Yes. So Winter Fair is coming up, January 17 through the 19th. This year they have three days of events. And they have a great website where you can find out the events, the time, the place, all of that. And that's montanawinterfair.com. The Chili Bowl will be held on January 24th, again at the Trade Center. Always a great time, come out and support the library. The Ice Gating Rink, they hosted their first weekend of tournaments last weekend. They have another tournament this weekend and then several other events planned for the rest of the season. It's been very busy down there too, now that it's cold enough. The Living History Project, the Resource Commission has been working on this project for about the last year. They do have the first of their signs complete and brochures. The Muse Artist is the first one out there and it is also on our website. And so participants can walk downtown. There'll be signs with QR codes that they can scan or brochures they can pick up. And it routes them to the city's website where there's these electronic brochures, pictures, and a lot more information. And so it's exciting there. It's a program that they'll build upon, but right now there's four buildings being done. The other buildings are the Montana Day Building, the Montana Building, and Central Beach. And then I included in your packet the No Further Action Letter for the former bird Lumbergh site. So this is something we've been working on with the EQ for quite some time. And so it was nice to see. She had some nice things to say about all of the city's efforts and gave recognition to Kevin and Dewayne, also sent them a copy of this nice letter. And so it's wonderful that at least that bridge has been completed. That's all I have. I will say that the score of the game is 18 to 20.
Oh, wow. That's a quick change.
I know.
I had to leave. I do, I have the intention. You want me to come back here?
Katie, if I start like getting losing answers, we go. Your side.
I'm listening. All right, so we voted to increase per capita from 176 to 238. And again, Lewestown and all the cities sort of paid double because both the county and the city pay on the capita.
So, yeah. But the city is not paying double. It's just that they get double.
It's residents, so...
They get double the money.
Exactly.
The population... They're getting taxes.
Yeah. But the other... Some places are 409 per capita, so we're still barely half.
What do you know our per capita is for this year?
What that comes to?
Yeah.
It was in the other paper.
It's about 6,000 times that number.
What's the...
Six times.
She's just reporting.
12,000?
She's reporting on that.
About 12,000. So that's sort of a drop in the bucket.
She's reporting on the pop... The increase for Snowy Mountain Development Corporation.
Okay.
And it went from 1.76 to 2.38 per capita.
Is that, uh... When is that going to back?
This year's...
So January 1st?
I'm not... They haven't sent out invoices yet, but sometime. Probably this year.
Will you recommend that they go this clear or let us know at a time? Because I would guess that we'll have to do a bunch of them.
Yep. Yeah, they... That definitely was a challenge for a lot of places. But yeah, figuring it out before then would be helpful. Sure.
Is there any public comments? Let me try to follow through this and watch the other game. Like acknowledgement of the claims that have been paid from December 13th to December 31st? Does anybody have any questions on the claims? I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve the claims paid from December 13th through December 31st of 2024.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Beuhler, second by Commissioner Hewitt. Is there any comments from the public? Do you have comments from commissioners? All those in favor of the claims, raise your right hand. Thank you. Discussion and action on reappointing commissioners to the following boards. Okay, so we talked about this airport with Diana, library, Danny. Do we... I mean, do we want to do a formal motion?
Yes, we might.
Do we just read it and then... Okay, let me just... So airport, Diana, library.
No. I'm just running through it. Are you just running through it or that's who's going to be on?
I'm gonna run through it and somebody can make a motion.
Okay, okay.
Airport is Diana, library is Danny, Parks and Recreation is... Lewestown, Fergus City County Health Board, we're still on.
I'm on it.
City County Planning, um... I don't know if we... Diana, did you want to... City County Planning?
Sure.
Central Montana Foundation was myself. Central Montana 911 is Katie.
No, I think you got me.
Is it Diana now?
But I think it was Diana.
It was Diana.
Okay.
But that does... If Commissioner Rubes would like to take it, Commissioner Hewitt would like to do it.
The 911 Board. Thanks. Would you like to be on 911?
I could do that.
It's an annual... Commissioner Rubes will do the 911 and Snowy Mountain Development Corp goes back to Katie. And then Commissioner Robertson is not at this time on any of these. However, we talked about... Commissioner Robertson and I talked and then also Holly and I talked about if will we do some of these committee meetings like when you have taken the lead a little bit on the Lewis and Clark parking and those types of things. And Commissioner Robertson was willing to step up for some of those like smaller committee meetings. But whatever you want. So, um, does everyone understand what I just said? So...
I'd move to approve this late as just combined.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Speaker, second by Commissioner Day. Or Nikki, did you get all that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, perfect. All those in favor? Well, let's do it.
You can do all those in favor.
Yeah, let's do all in favor. Please raise your right hand. Discussion and action on approving a petition for annexation for Duane Auto and Annie Auto to fully incorporate Lot 1A of the amended plat of Larson Edition and Lot 3 of Tyndale Trust Minor Subdivision into the city of Lewestown. Holly?
Yeah. So you have the petition. You also have the resolution. Attached to the resolution is the marked up survey. So the part that they're... The boundary that's changing is the dash line. So when you drive down Ash Street, right? Is it the section that includes the house? So the house is currently annexed. It's a yellow house with a big shop. Then behind there, they did some improvements along the creek, including a greenhouse. And so the house has been for sale for quite some time. Included in that sale was also the greenhouse and the creek frontage. And so that's why this needed to take place. So it's their desire to annex it to the property in the front. They... The Autos do own the old cars.
Was this boundary adjustment in the annexation?
Boundary lot relocation, yes. And then because you have this weird cross path section that would be in a different tax jurisdiction, or the Department of Revenue asked that they annex. And so they were all in one.
So that one piece of property wouldn't be both city and house?
Right. And then...
There was mention that it used to be in the city?
Not that back parcel, no. The house itself has always been. This is just a little bit at the back. So... This is currently in the city? No, the opposite. No, you're right. The northern part...
I'm pointing to this upper...
That is in the city?
That is in the city.
They're voting with a boundary line adjustment.
To down here.
Include that in the city.
And that is up Casino.
Kind of where they have the like...
They've shared a while and... So they're modifying that out of county and...
Correct, a small portion of it. So this is the yellow house across from the tennis court.
How much is the... I mean, it's very... There's not a whole lot there.
I don't know the exact dimension, um, but it's not. The total parcel is just over nature.
So on deeds that will... That's owned by them, will annex it to the city and that will all transfer?
Yep, so the legal description will now be the Lot 1A of the amended plat of Larson. And so that will be this new boundary.
Okay.
So it'll be that whole.
Okay. Any questions on this? Please.
So technically we need to move and approve the petition first and then we can go ahead and do the resolution.
Yep. Yeah, go.
I move that we approve the petition for annexation for Duane and Annie Auto to fully incorporate Lot 1A of the amended plat of Larson Edition and Lot 3 of Tyndale Trust Minor Subdivision into the city of Lewestown.
Clear.
It's been moved by Commissioner Day, second by Commissioner Rubes to approve the petition. Any comment from the public? I hope we see the lot for the annexation next year and clean up some of this. Any other comments from commissioners? I get it.
We are approving a petition for annexation. Commissioner Beuhler?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye. Thank you. So now, as Commissioner Day said, we're gonna move on to the annexation part. Whoa, sorry. I'm gonna move on to the resolution part. Resolution providing for the annexation by petition.
This is the actual annexation.
Yeah, so this is the actual annexation. And we don't have to do a public hearing on this?
I would like to just mention this zoning. So the existing lot that was previously annexed was zoned Part 1. And so you'll see that section that it basically says the new whole lot will be our lot.
And again, this was requested by Duane. You're not forcing them.
Just gotta stay it up though.
I move we approve Resolution 4187, a resolution providing for the annexation by petition of property belonging to Duane and Annie Auto.
It's been moved by Commissioner Beuhler. Sorry. And second by Commissioner Robertson. Is there any comments from the public? Comments from commissioners?
We are approving Resolution Number 4187, a resolution providing for the annexation by petition of property belonging to Duane Auto and Annie Auto. Commissioner Beuhler?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye. What's the score?
Well, team scored another touchdown. So it's still three points different.
How much time's left?
I don't know.
I will say, this is not a part of the meeting, but the Cats won 40 years ago, the year of my birth.
Whoa.
What a good...
Whoa.
Back to a foreign style.
FAA grants.
Do some reconstruction of taxiways.
Yes, so include it in your packet. It's just a portion of this very lengthy grant application. Yep. It's a...
Federal assistance.
Yes. And the airport has applied for some money to reconstruct Taxiway A partially and an intersection with Taxiway C. And so there is a small match required, but the majority of the project costs are hoped to be grant funded.
So the match, does that come from both the city and the county or just the airport?
Tony's up the map. In the past.
Brandi old brother, shuttle of your life. So just to be clear, in the federal government, when the FAA gives money typically, short of COVID money, let's say that was the only exception I've ever seen, there's always a local match. And it's usually between 5% and 10%, either 5% or 10% depending on your... In the most recent FAA reorganization. And so there will be a match. This is phase two of what was supposed to be a single phase project. It will now be at least two phases, probably three or four phases to get it done because the defense key... They don't seem to find enough money to finish this project. There's been a big push by our airport and a lot of pushback with the tents, the best we can, to say, give us this money, please. And they finally are doing this, which is a very critical intersection where all of the big jets have to come in and turn around in front of a big hanger. And this is very old asphalt, it's diorine here, some repair, replacement.
Do we know if it's a 5% or a 10%?
I don't think it's a 5. I think it's a 5, yeah. I think it's a 5. And I'm pointing it out just so that this commissioner realizes that the airport is self-funded, public entity that lives off of the rent with the tenants that are up there, there, not mills, not part of the city budget, which is always a big challenge. And so the airport is always on a shoestring budget trying to keep roofs from blowing off and asphalt. We have a lot of asphalt at our airport, so we have a big airport with a lot of asphalt. And this is actually reducing some of that asphalt, not that it's a good idea, but the FAA assists on it. So just keep that in mind. Once again, all the money the airport is going, God is going toward asphalt, asphalt repair. So, and that's, that's a little bit of whining over, just so everybody understands, this is a huge facility, miles and miles and miles of asphalt that the city does not charge mills for. But, yeah, is a city property, is a county property.
And so that's why it's here tonight. Commissioner Butcher already signed it, and so that's something that Tim and I visited about is the requirements of the FAA, or FAA. It's interesting because there is the strength resolution where the airport board has a lot of autonomy, but with the grants and these sort of things, they want both the county and the city to sign off.
It's kind of a frustration.
Kind of side note, is what she's saying, is that many, many years ago, thirty years ago probably?
Yeah, probably.
Something like that. The city and the county created a joint, what was called formerly the Joint Resolution, to give the airport board and the airport manager powers to do things like sign a contract for this. And for whatever reason, in recent years, the FAA has come back and the feds have come back and said, no, that's not good enough for us. We need you guys all to sign off on all this and having these commission meetings and county commission meetings. And so just as a member of that airport board and a member of this city commission, I think there needs to be some pushback from the city and the county to say, we have delegated that authority to a different entity, live with it, go let them sign for it, because otherwise it's kind of pointless.
Well, it blows up the process.
Yeah, now you need five layers of approval, basically, to get this done, which should be a signature after one board meeting of your. That said, I make a motion.
Would you like to make a motion?
To approve the FAA grant agreement for the reconstruction of Taxiway.
I'll second.
So move by Commissioner Robertson, second by Commissioner Day, is there any comments from the public? Any other comments from commissioners? All right, we'll call both.
We are authorizing the city manager to sign an FAA agreement for the reconstruction of Taxiways at the Louis Towne Airport. Commissioner Buehler?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubez?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speka?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, discussion in action on approving the purchase of computers for the Louis Towne Police Department. This was a, something that kind of came up, but Justin Digital switch it over, obviously.
Yes, so it kind of came up because out of necessity, they had a few computers that simply died on them. And so it has been, I don't know, it went back at least six years since they've done any technology upgrades. And so given the current timeline of police cars, you know, we've been striving to do one car a year. Unfortunately, the turnaround times have not been very conducive. And so, you know, we order a car, it would show up maybe a year and a half later, and so that timeline kind of got pushed. We have received a car this year, and so the police department is confident that they can afford to go the car for this budget year and do the technology upgrades of that. So that is what's being proposed tonight, is the money that would have been utilized for the car we allocated this year will go to technology.
Are these computers for dispatch or for the?
This is for the police department. There is one dispatch computer, because of course that's one that died.
Yep.
But that's a different budget. And so it falls below the threshold for bringing to you guys.
And this is still a lower amount. That's what they.
Than the car.
For the car, so. I move that we approve the purchase of computers for the Louis Towne Police Department.
Must say it was Ron.
It was Ron.
He's to my left, so I heard him quicker. It's been moved by Commissioner Day, second by Commissioner Rubez to approve these computers, which, I mean, everybody knows, as soon as you get one, they're awesome. So they could probably, they could probably use them. Is there any comments from the public? Any comments from commissioners?
Just to confirm that Justin was happy and confident with the bid that he's on there?
Yeah. This is our IC provider, so it includes the installation, the pre-lighting it, so when they actually come up here, it's fairly quick to install them and get them on our server.
And all the. Our walls and all.
Yep, they can remote into them and all that.
Thank you.
We are approving the purchase of computers for the Louis Towne Police Department. Commissioner Buehler?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubez?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speka?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is Roger Larson for an electrical license, which everybody knows we have to approve these business licenses as they come in. But does he, Buffalo Montanas, he kind of setting up shelters, he just?
No, he has a job. He has had a license before on the city limits, but it kind of fluctuates as to the work.
Are electricians like plumbers, that they have to be bonded and those kinds of things?
That's it. And you have to be a master electrician, too, to have your own license.
Correct. And so they need liability insurance and bonding.
He's been an electrician for a long time.
I was gonna say his name looks very familiar.
I move we approve the business license for Roger Larson to get a city business license.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rubez, second by Commissioner Day. Any comments from the public? Any comments from commissioners?
Okay, we are approving the business license for Roger Larson. Commissioner Buehler?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubez?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speka?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, citizens' requests?
Citizens?
Media citizens. Citizens of the media. Commissioners minute. Commissioner Buehler?
I would love to see the Bobcats.
Or we had now.
Same. Four points apart, but they just, three points third, but they just took it away.
What's the first time's the deal?
It was just the start of the fourth quarter.
Twenty-five, twenty-eight.
Commissioner Speka, do you have anything?
I do that.
Just happy new year.
Happy new year.
Commissioner Rubez?
Question, isn't there a city ordinance against moving snow from your driveway out into the city street? So could we maybe have that publicized one more time? We do it every year, I think. There's an old lady, I mean, a nice lady. But her bearing was so high-centered on stuff, we just need to keep people from doing that, if we could.
What area was that?
That was over where I live, up on two-twenty Montana, where I live, and this was like two blocks over on Fort.
Well, she does. Well, I, I had to back out to try and get up the highway. I couldn't get up.
Well, Fort, Fort, I think, the city's been moving snow.
Yeah, they, yeah.
But to get there, that wind just piled up.
Maybe we can mention some snow removals, since this is really kind of the first snow we've had in quite a while.
Yeah.
Put some snow removal factors.
Just reminders, shovel it onto your property.
Right.
There is a city code that says.
Your lawn's gonna need the moisture suit, really.
Yeah.
Can you mention to us from the grandest, what is the city's policy on, or process or desire in terms of getting snow off streets, some streets, or hay streets?
So they have a priority ratings. Snow routes, obviously, have pretty much already been hit. They'll address, you know, complaints and concerns. They've got a pretty good handle, they'll probably start removing those piles and stuff like that, and then continue to branch out into the neighborhoods. Typically, when they do that, that's when we get more calls, if they're plowing around vehicles, things like that. And so it's important that people move their vehicles frequently and things like that.
What's the timeframe of when they start hitting those side streets and neighborhood streets?
They try within three days, yeah. It has, the major snowfall happening on the weekend does kind of slow that a little bit.
So they don't work on weekends?
They still did, yep, and had a lot of it done before I came to work this morning.
Well, we're supposed to get some more snow tomorrow.
I just pretend like I'm driving in a rodeo.
Especially to get up here and.
Drive.
Yeah, it's slick, too, so.
It's very slick.
You'll as much as you can.
You'll.
Commissioner Hewitt, do you have a minute at all?
I have nothing, thank you.
Is that all you have, commissioners?
Yeah.
Sure.
I just like to say that it's refreshing that we can, as a city commission, go through a leadership discussion, change, if you want to call it, with diplomacy and no drama, unlike our federal government. And it's nice and refreshing we can do that here.
Speaking of the federal governments, MLK Day is January twentieth, along with the inauguration, so our next commission meeting will be January twenty-first, so we will meet on the Tuesday, not on Monday.
Oh, I have a minute. The, speaking of not, it's this, the library is going to meet January sixteenth, not I don't know why, it just came back. I'll come better.
All right, Ron, put this one back together so we can. Thank you.